One more minute. One minute. It's nice to have an audience. Okay. Are we up? It's 7:00 PM, Monday, July 16th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the T K City Council. Would you please rise for the saying of the pledge and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take a moment for a silent prayer. Thank you, maybe senior. All right. Getting ready for the reading exercise. Will you adjust here? Item number one is a joint meeting with the planning commission to review the report for the consultant, from the consultant necessary to establish development impact fees. Charlie's gonna do it because our consultant is stuck at the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, planning commission. Found out late this evening that our consultant, Carson Bice, stuck the airport in DC because of the storms around Charlotte. He apologized to us for not being able to attend, but he will, either he or his business partner will be here at the August 6th scheduled public hearing. In his absence, I did want to take for the public as well as for council and the planning commission, just kind of the first part, run through the consultant's presentation. Council and planning commission have all received a copy of the full report from the consultant, Tishler Bice. Just gonna move right in. This is gonna, the next couple minutes, next couple slides are gonna be more about impact fees 101, and I think a little better when I move, so I may just move around a little bit as we go through this. So, the legal and methodologies of impact fees are one-time payments to fund system improvements that cannot be deposited into the general fund. They have to have their own special fund, which we will be setting up prior to second read, provided it, provided we get to that point. Basic legal requirements are need, benefit, and proportionality. You cannot charge new growth for 100% of the cost. But it is limited to their proportionate share. The consultant went through that process. For those that have gone through the report, you can see that proportionate share is demonstrated in there. And the general methods, there are three general methods on doing a impact fee. One is a plan-based, one is cost recovery, and one is incremental expansion. And we'll get to here in another slide or two, each of the, each of the items being considered under our impact fees touches one or more of those three, plan-based, cost recovery, or incremental expansion. Moving along to the eligible cost, and again, we're just talking in generalities at this point, not specific to T K. Facilities are improvements required to serve new development. Yes, those are eligible. Maintenance and repairs, those are not eligible. Operating costs are not eligible. Excess capacity in existing facilities, yes, those are eligible costs to be funded under impact fees. Improvements required to correct existing deficiencies, no, unless there is a funding plan already in place. So those, those are the types of things that are eligible or not eligible to be funded under impact fees. Your impact fees in South Carolina, the revenue must be maintained in an interest-bearing account, which we will be setting up. Monies must be spent within three years of the scheduled date for construction in the CIP, which all of ours, that we've got under, under this impact fee study, that should be attainable. Another thing, and it's actually not on this slide, is they all have to be done within 10 years. So the impact fees are good for 10 years, okay? At that point in time, we should be at build-out. We can increase the fee later, but you have to also do an updated study in order to do so. Your, you must publish an annual monitoring report, which is consistent with what we do with all of our other funds. Comprehensive renew and update every five years. That will be tagged along with the, our five-year update of our CIP. All maximum allowable fee changes, as I stated earlier, do require an updated study and requires, there is a requirement of an analysis that estimates the effect of imposing updated impact fees on affordable housing in the Fort Mill School District, which we have, we have done that as well, and specifically here in T K, not necessarily the Fort Mill School District. So, here are the fee categories. Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, and then Utilities, which we have subdivided that into Water and Wastewater. As I stated previously, I remember the three, the three approaches to an impact fee. Cost recovery, incremental expansion, plan-based, you see those across the top. And then you can see how the cost was allocated, or what metrics was used on the cost allocation. So, for Parks and Recreation, you got cost, you've got some cost recovery, that's the debt on the golf course. Some have asked, well, how can you do the golf course? Because it has members and they collect those fees. It is a public facility. You do, and is not exclusive to memberships, okay? It's unlike the Beach and Swim Center. If we had debt on that, we couldn't do the Beach and Swim Center with it because it is a strictly membership base. Tax dollars do go towards the debt payment of the golf course. That's why it was able to be included in here as a cost recovery. Incremental expansion, that's park amenities and trails for Parks and Recreation. The plan-based, the only thing on the plan-based there is we are, under the state statutes, allowed to recoup the cost of what the impact fee study cost us, which was approximately $40,000. And the allocation, the metrics used there is in population. On Police, no cost recovery, we don't have any existing debt right now, police, but you've got your incremental expansion. With that, you've got facilities, vehicles, equipment. The facilities, obviously, the new police station that council will be talking about later on this evening. Your vehicles is replacing the patrol boat, very old patrol boat that our law enforcement folks use on Lake Patrol, and the equipment is the dispatch software. I'm gonna take one quick second. One thing to keep in mind is, under the state statutes, okay, if we're talking equipment, vehicles, things like that, it has to exceed the $100,000 threshold, okay? So if it's less than $100,000 on a per-unit basis, it cannot be part of the impact fee, all right? So, regular patrol vehicle, completely outfitted, is about $50,000. That doesn't qualify for impact fees. A police boat does qualify for an impact fee because it does exceed that, that $100,000 threshold. Your, again, basically, your police is just in the incremental expansion. It does have a small bit in the plan-based approach, just for the recapturing of the impact fee, its percentage of the impact fee. And the matrix used here, and we'll get more into this as we get into specifically that, you've got population and then non-residential trips. So, your population is on the residential side of the impact fee, your non-residential trips is gonna be how they calculate the commercial side of the impact fee. And the same is true with, with your fire department as well. So on fire department, you do have a cost recovery component there, that is your facility, that is Station 1, that we just opened last, last summer. And then you've got an incremental expansion component, that's on the apparatus, that is for adding new fire trucks, new apparatus. When we, generally in fire services, when we talk about apparatus, we're talking about the big red shiny trucks that everybody loves to see unless it's coming to your house. And then you've got, again, the plan-based, which is your impact fee study. And again, same as with the police station, your residential component is, is based off of population. Your non-residential component, your commercial component, is on your non-residential trips. On your water side of things, you've got your booster pumps under your cost recovery, those are already in place, we have debt on those. And then you, you don't have anything on the incremental expansion, but you do have plan-based, and this is in our utilities are the, are where we have the plan-based component, the true plan-based component. So on there, you've got storage, which is the new elevated water tank scheduled to go in Windhaven. You've got a vehicle. This is a vac pump, used for cleaning sewer lines and things of that nature. It's about a $750,000 piece of equipment. And then you obviously have the, the impact fee. With both water and wastewater, gallons was the matrix used there. On the wastewater end of things, you have facility improvements. Those facility improvements are increasing pump sizes at our existing lift stations, okay? They've got the capacity, just not the horsepower to handle some of this new growth coming in. That's how it's attributed to that, so that the lift stations can handle that additional flow being generated by the growth. And again, that matrix is under, is performed by gallons. So, those are your components and your methodologies that make up the rest of this 60-some-odd-page report. Obviously, we're not gonna go through every single page tonight. On your nonutility fee summary, this is page nine of the report. This was the one, the, there's the figures that everybody was looking for. So, on a single-family unit, this is your townhomes and your single-family detached and your patio homes, okay? Everything that is not in apartment falls under that single-family unit category. You can see the total, the total fee there is $6,656. That's broken down into the three components. The first being Parks and Recreation at $4,317, Police at $657, and then Fire at $1,682. In a few, and here, just a few minutes as we get into some of these slides, it'll give you a breakdown on how those numbers came about. On the apartment side of things, again, you can see the breakout between Parks and Rec, Police, and Fire, comes up with a total fee of $3,827. On your nonresidential, again, this, we're still talking nonutilities, you've got industrial, which we don't have anything that is zoned industrial, we don't have any existing industrial in the city. Should that come to play, obviously, on, on your commercial, there is not an impact to Parks and Recreation, all right? There is an impact on utilities, there is an impact on your public safety. Therefore, they're not paying on the Parks and Rec side, but they are paying on a per fat 1,000-square-foot basis for Police and Fire. On the utility side, which we'll get to here in just a second, it's based on meter sizes. That's how they, how you calculate their impact to the system. So, your maximum fee, probably where we'll see most of ours, is probably gonna be in that office and some in that commercial. So you're looking $3,742 on commercial per every 1,000-square-feet, and $1,462 on your office and institutional, again, per every 1,000-square-feet. On your utility fee, the bulk of our meters, system-wide, on that .75, three-quarter-inch meter, that's your domestic meter, you know, for consumption. We do have a few meters already in the system, we may get a few more that hit up to that, that six-inch range. You'll see those on apartment units, things like that, where we do a master meter instead of individually metering the different buildings and things like that. We do come across one and, one inch and one and a half inch meters on that system. Those are typically on commercial-size irrigation for landscaping and things like that in the commercial areas. But on your residential, domestic meter, that's that three-quarter-inch meter. One big difference I wanna, I wanna point out here is, the fees that I just showed you here on your nonutility fees, those would be paid at the time of permit issuance, okay, at the building permit issuance. Your utility fee, impact fee, would be paid at the time that they pay their tap fee, okay? So when they come in and pay their, their tap fee to the city, and that's when we go to set the tap, or set that meter, that meter doesn't get set until that impact fee comes in, okay? So basically, they have no water until they, until they have paid that fee along with their, their meter set and capacity fee. Those fees are part of the budget process, so we'll, we'll get into those August 1st with council at that budget workshop. So, again, going back to this, you've got a cost allocation split between water and wastewater, again, because you do it by meter size, so that you can calculate gallons, which is the impact to the system. So on your water, you're $1,107, and on your wastewater, $764. So for each new home, that's gonna be $1,871 going towards the utility side of things on a three-quarter-inch meter. And then you can see the rest of those figures as they go up with a six-inch compound meter. We've got two at the Revere, which are the apartments on Hupergram Way, we've got one over at Stonecrest Villas, and then we've got one at T K Elementary School. Those things come with an impact fee of $60,505 because they use the larger meters because they're using more consumption, they're taking up more year capacity. So, how do they come up with the numbers? We'll start with parks. The components, as I stated earlier, golf course, which is the cost recovery, park amenities and trails, those park amenities are bathrooms, playgrounds, picnic areas, things like that, docks, like we have at Windjammer, Pitcar, and those type things. So park amenities and trails, that's on a consumption base. They did not have a land component assumed because we don't foresee having to purchase property for park space. Typically, that, that, those lands are given to us, as, as was the case with Catawba Park in Lakewood, as Windhaven is the park over there. So we did not, we did not assume a, a land component in this. Costs are allocated to population. So, and I realize some of these numbers are hard to see. Tim should be putting those up on the screen for those that are viewing along at home, are gonna watch this later in the week on our website. Basically, you've got a .045 on, on your amenities per person, so .045 number of amenities per person. It's got a unit cost of $19,272. You've got 2.712 linear feet of trails per person, which comes with a cost of $141 on a per-unit cost. So if you go all the way down, your growth-related expenditures, if you look at park amenities down at the bottom on the green tab there, it's $2,139, $139,192. On your linear feet of trails, it comes out to $937,227, grand total of 3.076 million, okay? So, that's your projected growth-related expenditures, all right? Your cost per person, you can, this is on the golf course, total debt service of $7,62,579. Your cost per person comes out to approximately $255, $256. You can see here's where they start breaking out their proportionate share. So you've got your existing resident share, which is approximately 34%, and then you've got your resident, your new residential growth share at approximately, approximately 11%. Gives you a 45% total residential share. Again, golf courses are hard whenever they look at this because it's not just residents that are typically using it. We look, we got with our golf management company, they did a breakdown as far as, what is the percentage of resident, non-resident? Yeah. And they actually came out to about a, anywhere between 40 and 50% are residents. You know, just depending on time of year and things like that. But on average, it's right there in that 45% threshold. So, that worked out, that's how we worked into those numbers. Let's keep going here on your proposed park fees. So, we talked about these at the beginning, so some of these numbers will start looking a little bit familiar to you. So, on your fee component, again, you've got park improvements, trails, golf course, which is the, the cost recovery, and then your impact fee study, $1,521.31, or 30 cents per person. So, what does that mean per rooftop? Using standards from the American Community Survey, the ACS, that's where you get the 2.84 persons per household. I've seen everything from, for T K, from 2.7 to 3.3. DHEC average is always 2.5. This is a, a number that is generally widely accepted in the industry, which is why they use the ACS numbers. So you've got 2.84 persons per household on the single-family and 1.63 on the multi-family. You take your number at the top, and that's where you come in, that's where you come up with your proposed fee of the $4,130, uh, $4,317, and the $24.83 on the multi-family. Any questions thus far? I know I'm going relatively fast.
That's good.
All right. Can't keep it to three minutes on this, it's too many slides. Projected park revenue. Again, these are projections, okay? Not hard and fast. Total expenditures, projected, excuse me, total projected revenue, you can see there at the bottom, $3.729 million. Your total expended, projected expenditures, $3.876 million. Now, at this point, I'm assuming there's a lot of people thinking, what about Catawba Park? It's a 14 and a half million-dollar facility, where is that? If we were to do a plan-based approach, okay, to fund Catawba Park and its proportionate share, whatever impact fees come in, that's great, but we are legally bound to have to fund the rest of it, no matter what, okay? By using a, a consumption base and a cost replacement plan approach, gives us a little bit more security, okay? Council can decide, yes, we want to put these Parks and Rec impact fees into Catawba Park to build new trails, to build new playgrounds, to build new ballfields. Or council can say, hey, yeah, as we go through each budget year, we want to use these to redo the bathrooms at Rundy Park, replace a mile of trail along T K Drive, okay? These are things that we're capturing that cost replacement on. It can go towards those replacement of existing facilities. It cannot go towards just general maintenance. So it couldn't be to replace a toilet at a bathroom that happened to break, but if it was to demolish that building and build something new, it can go towards that. That's why you're not gonna see that 14 and a half million dollars up there, okay? If all the builders decided to stop and all, and the impact fees that we thought we were gonna get don't come in, you still have to spend that money, okay? It comes in at a little bit lower rate on your impact fee by doing it the way we've done it versus that true plan-based approach, but it doesn't handcuff the city for the next 10 years on what it must do financially, okay? So, any questions on that? I just wanted to make sure that everybody is, is on the same page there.
I got a question.
Sure.
Do we know what the amount would be if we were to, to take the other approach?
No, I did not ask the consultant to, to run those figures. Once we started talking about what that would mean, we did, we opted to, to push him in this direction. It was a, a safer financial choice for the city for, for a long term, so we did not ask him to run those numbers.
I said, thanks.
Moving into police facilities. Any other questions on parks? Parks and Rec, good there? Okay.
Will it fund pickleball courts?
As we stated, it can go towards any new parks and recreational facility that council chooses as those fees come in.
Okay, thanks.
Police facilities. The components here, as I discussed, discussed earlier, you've got your police space, which is on a consumption base, that is the new police station, vehicles and equipment also on a consumption base. Carts, excuse me, costs are allocated to the population on the residential impact side of it, and on nonresidential vehicle trips, using industry standards there, or national industry standards there on the commercial side, the nonresidential portion. So, again, a lot of this is gonna be very similar to what you just saw in the Parks and Rec side of things, but your growth-related expenditures, as we move to the bottom of this screen, on the residential side, $483,873 would be their proportionate share, on the commercial side, their proportionate share at $120,536, giving you a grand total of $604,409 as far as their proportionate share on a police facility need, okay? You can see up, up at the top, on the square, on the square footage and the demand unit per person and per trip, and that breakdown there at the top of that slide. Your police vehicles and equipment need, again, that's gonna be on the boat, on the dispatch software, the dispatch software is included in the police bond that we're asking council to approve later on tonight. So, again, this money helps, can help offset those, those expenses. So, again, going to the bottom here, I'll start, well, excuse me, let me start at the top. You've got a per-unit cost of $162,500 when you look at the residential and non, nonresidential on your total unit cost there. So as you come to the bottom, your residential, on the residential end of it, $71,500 growth-related projected expenditure, on your nonresidential, $17,875, giving you a grand total of $87,750. And again, this is just on the equipment and vehicle.
Hey Charlie, on the slide before with facilities?
Yes, sir.
That's 604. Isn't that close to where our shortage was? The number when we were financing and looked?
No, I think the shortage was, was
A little less than that, maybe?
Was less than that, yep.
Okay.
I'm wanting to say it was in the $90,000 to $100,000.
No, it was more than that.
What was the, on the shortage, do you recall? I, we can get you that number. Was it 187 short, for that first year? There you go, 187. We'll double-check the number too, to make sure.
Can I trust the chief?
I do trust him. Trust him with my life. He's carrying a gun.
Oh, he said, "life."
So on your proposed, getting into how they come up with the fees.
Nothing.
Keep going, keep going.
Please keep going.
On the proposed police fees, just showing how those, how those are calculated, on your residential side, again, there's the 2.84 and the 1.63 as far as head count, average head count per dwelling unit. That's where your 657 and your 377 is coming from. And then as you get down into the nonresidential, and this is, again, based on the per-thousand-square-feet, as was shown in the past, you've got the 164 on industrial, $1,043 on commercial, and 407 on the office and institutional. So, that's, that shows you how they calculated those fees. So you've got your cost per person and your cost per vehicle trip up at the top, and then those are calculated in. Your trip rate adjustments, 50% and 33%, you see there in the nonresidential, those are, again, based on national, national standards, is, is where those come in from. So, on your projected police revenue, we'll just skip to the bottom here, your projected revenues of $705,401 over projected expenditure, expenditures of $692,159. And again, in all cases, this is across 10 years, okay? Fire facilities. Any questions on PD before we jump into fire? Okay. Fire facilities, the components here are Station Number 1, that we just completed last year, that's on a cost-recovery basis, and then on the apparatus, that is on a consumption base. Costs are allocated to population and nonresidential vehicle trips, resident and commercial, just as it was in, in the police department. So, your cost per person, $142, $142.27, your cost per vehicle trip in, $50.06, talking on the, just on the facility. So on that cost recovery for the, for Station 1, and you can see your existing development share of 73% and your growth share of 27%, all right, for their proportionate share. On your apparatus need, again, we submitted, here's everything we have right now, here's what we project to need as the new growth comes online, here's what it would cost to replace what we have right now. So for each of the engines, the ladder truck, things of that nature, if tornado blew through and sucked it all up and it was gone and we had to replace it with today's dollars, here's what those costs would be. So, and then they calculate in what the new growth proportionate share would be to purchase those things new. So, as you go through this, again, over 10 years, the growth-related expense of $1.14 million on the residential side, on your vehicle trip in, on the nonresidential side of $253,500, giving you a total projected growth-related expenditure of $1.394 million. Moving on.
Home stretch, home stretch.
On your, on your residential side, again, you can see your cost per person for facilities, apparatus, and then the cost recovery on the impact fee, and then your cost per trip in on the, on the nonresidential side for each of those three categories, gives you $592.57 and $216.68 respectively there. As you calculate those down through, again, you can see some of those same trips per 1,000-square-feet and that trip rate adjustment based on the national standards, there's your 2.84 and your 1.63 again, giving you your total proposed fees for, that would be part of the, the fire part of the impact fee on the residential, single-family, $1,682, and then $967 on the multi-family side, and then obviously you can see the commercial side of things, the largest being on the commercial and then the office and institutional. Projected fire revenue, over the 10 years, $1.81 million with total expenditures of just over $2 million. Again, this is just projected. Revenues could go up should this council or future councils in this next 10 years approve new commercial developments, approve new mixed-use or residential developments that aren't already approved. This was all done based on what's approved right now, today. So, those revenues could go up, expenditures could come down. Again, these are just projections. Again, these are just projections, all right? You're not approving a a budget of this is what we're going to spend in over ten years. On your water side, getting to the home stretch here. Again, your booster pumps, your storage tank and your and the vacuum jetter truck. Again, you've got a cost recovery and a plan base. And as I stated earlier, these costs are allocated to gallons of usage. So as you go through this, you can see that you're, and the system has to be designed on peak flow, not on your average daily flow. Your system has to be able to handle those peak flow amounts. How do you arrive at the peak flow amount? You get your average daily flow on the residential side, it's generally two point five times higher. On your commercial side, it's anywhere between one point eight and two times higher than the average daily flow. So that's that's where those peak plant, uh, peak flow demands come in at. So your cost per peak flow demand, twenty-six cents, and that's on a per-thousand-gallon basis there. You can see the debt service schedule there to the side. Again, this is just on the booster pumps, okay? This isn't the total debt on the entire utility system, but for those two booster pumps. And again, those will be paid off in the year twenty twenty-five. Net increase in peak daily flow, you can see you've got the gross share plus the existing development share of eighty-four percent and sixteen percent working us into our, wow. So this much, so basically what you're going to get is about twenty-six cents per per end unit that's going to go towards your cost recovery on your booster pumps. It's not an astronomical number by any stretch. On your planned water improvements, obviously you've got the half-million-dollar tank plus a seven, excuse me, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar jetter truck, vacuum truck. Again, on your cost per gallon there, you've got three dollars plus your, and then your cost per meter. There's your unit cost here, the three dollars and the fifty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. So, working through that to to get into what are the actual impact fees going to be per meter size? So you start at the top, your peak, your peak residential gallons per day at three twenty, your cost factors per gallon of capacity, your net capital cost per gallons, three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Your net capital cost per meter, fifty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Taking those and then using the capacity ratios is determined by the American Water Works Association, arrives at what your impact fees are going to be for each meter size. One thousand one hundred and seven dollars on the three-quarter inch, which again is your typical domestic meter size. Actually, it's every meter we have in the ground on the domestic side is that three-quarter inch meter. On your wastewater side, the planned improvements, again, obviously it's a planned base. This is for the upgrades to existing lift stations on the pumps and costs are allocated to gallons of usage. Sewer lift or pump stations, those terms are used interchangeably, they mean the same thing. Your cost per gallon of capacity is three dollars and seventeen cents due to the, and that's coming from the additional one hundred and fifty thousand gallons in capacity. So, working through those numbers, you've got your three seventeen on your sewer upgrades, your development fee study of two cents, again, it's it's proportionate share. Gives you net capital cost of the three nineteen, again, using the American Water Works Association's capacity ratios. That's where those for all development types on a per meter, per size cost going down the right side there of that bottom table. And with that, I'll answer, I'll try to answer any questions that anybody's got at this point. I know it's a lot of information, it's a very thorough, very comprehensive report. I know it's a lot of reading. It is necessary. It does meet the requirements of the state statutes. The Affordable Housing Study was compiled. It's, I'm very pleased with the report. I think the our consultant did an excellent job. He's very apologetic he couldn't be here tonight. But again, if you've got technical questions, feel free to email those to either myself, city council, or planning commission, to to Susan. We'll be happy to get those to the consultant ahead of the August sixth meeting to try to get you answers. If there are any general questions, I'll be happy to answer those at this time.
Planning, you have anything?
Any general questions? I got one or two.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good.
On the commercial side, it looks like
That is correct.
Okay. Do we actually, I'm more concerned about competitiveness on this. There's some commercial development we might want. Let's say they're debating between placing at T G K or Fort Mill. Is this competitive to other locations or are we the first ones out of the blocks with these kind of fees at this level?
No, I mean, town of Fort Mill has impact fees on their utilities. They are actually doubling their capacity both on water and wastewater with their impact fees. If you're wanting to just compare utility systems, our fees are going to be higher. We buy water from Fort Mill. So there's an upcharge there and then they've bought it from Rock Hill. We're sending sewer to Rock Hill. So if you're not making the water or treating all the sewer, it is going to be hard to compete from a from a a fee standpoint. I mean, our our volumetric rates are higher. Our, I don't know what Fort Mill's impact fee rates are, but I know that they do have impact fees for their utilities, absolutely. The same methodology was used.
So how much of a hit is this to Game On, for example?
Game On would would have the utility impact, the police impact and the fire impact, absolutely.
I mean, from a dollar perspective, is this going to be significant to that development based on the?
That would be a question specific for that developer. I could not tell you what is a detrimental impact to that developer. That would be something that they would have to determine. But they they are aware of these fees and they haven't told me that they're running for the hills.
Anything else? Did you have a question about the affordable housing piece as it relates to the Fort Mill School District impact fees? The additive component?
Because obviously we're not doing this in the vacuum, we've got
The school district one coming up too, but
Being approved tonight.
Yep, well, I just cranked the numbers together, we're still well within the margins for that, that three, yeah. So I just I just double-checked that to make sure. It still raises it a little bit, but it's still within the bounds, I suppose.
One question, Charlie, was there a specific reason why the new police station wasn't included as a planned element?
For the same reason, Catawba Park.
Okay.
That that does not mean that we can't have cost recovery on that, which is what we're showing. But to show the, again, they only would pay, the the new growth would only pay its proportionate share, okay? Little bit more of a safety factor on the police station versus, you know, fourteen and a half million dollar park. But in talking it through with the consultant, he felt this was the best way to go because it allows council to make decision, budgetary decisions as we move forward as those impact fees come in.
Gotcha, and there are three or four items that are in here as planned-based elements that we will be obligated to purchase lift stations.
And those are on the utility side of things, yes, sir.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Anybody? I think we're good, thank you.
Anybody on council have a question? Well, then I have a question.
Sure.
So if we decide not to do some major component over a hundred thousand dollars that's already planned for, a the police station or something in the park, do we have to back that part of the impact fee out if we don't do that?
Not, as long as it's part of the the cost recovery, no, sir. Okay, if it's part of the plan base, you you can't back it out. So your plan-based stuff. Hey Tim, if you're back there, take me back to the very first or second or third slide.
I think it's the water tank, the vacuum jetter truck and the sewer lift upgrades.
So let's say we don't do the the vacuum jetter truck. Just as an example.
There we go. So on your plan base, you've got the, you've got your water tank, you've got the vac truck. And then on the sewer side of things, you've got your lift station improvements.
So if we don't do the vac truck, does that back out of the impact fee?
You would have to make that decision before we approve final reading, say it in final reading.
So once we approve the final reading, we are obligated to buy the vac truck. That's that's the point I was trying to make.
That is correct, yes. Yep. Now, when do we have to buy it? Well, it has to be within the ten years and within three years of when it was projected to be purchased. I don't have the report right in front of me, but I believe that was about midway through the through the ten years. So, we we should be well underway with impact fees by that point in time before we have to actually move to acquire the the back truck.
I wasn't picking on the back truck, I was just making
Understand, completely understand. And that was that was done strategically because of need as well as our existing debt schedule on some other capital lease items that we have with those coming off the books as well, we're looking to schedule that at the time point we're looking at.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll close the joint meeting. And we'll wait for them to depart and we'll go on to the next. Y'all going in the next room or are you done for the night?
We're done tonight.
Okay, got you. No, I guess, I'll let you guys get comfortable wherever you want to go. Item two on the agenda is public comments. Do I have a sign-up sheet or we? I was going to say, we don't have any sign-up sheets, so we don't have any public comments. Eh, wrong. All right, we'll start with number one, Jason Winburne, Harbor Court. Please state your name, address.
Yes, my name is Jason Winburne and my wife and I live at seven zero eight one Harbor Court since May of two thousand seventeen. The weekend before, the Fourth of July, we discovered a second sinkhole in our backyard. The first one we jointly repaired with our neighbor, Kevin Sidebottom, at seven zero eight two. For the second sinkhole, after we dug ten feet down, we discovered a thirty-inch diameter plastic storm pipe running through our property. Originally, we attempted to repair the pipe, but discovered that it had technically disintegrated. And at that point, we called the city of T G K. As we discovered that it was also responsible for the neighborhood stormwater running through several properties, technically six houses, used this stormwater drain along Harbor Court. Following the drain, it originates from seven zero eight three Harbor Court and goes under the adjacent property, seven zero eight two, which it goes near a pool area. Then it goes near my pool area at seven zero eight one and then runs through several houses. I counted three, and then it runs before dumping into the lake. I've been told by Charlie, Tim and Chad that this is a private drain and not a city issue. I've always been prepared to take care of the drainage to my property. I've never asked the the city to repair my pool for anything. My concern is that the storm drain is unreparable. The plastic pipe is twenty years old and professionals state that make it, that I would be making a choice to dump the water as I have no means to run a storm drainage to the lake. Both of our neighbors are here tonight and it is a concern on both sides as we're having to make a decision regarding stormwater drain that flows through the neighborhood. We're trying to do our civic duty and what's best for everyone on our street. Stormwater is a concern of the city and I ask that the city be involved in a public solution because it affects multiple houses. At this point, since it was made a civil issue to to our knowledge, we have contacted S E D Heck for guidance as we don't believe that we are the responsible party for stormwater flow for our entire street out into the lake.
Thank you. Your neighbor's going to step up and do, say the same thing?
Yes.
Come on, you're Kevin, how do you say your last name? Okay, you're at seven eighty-two next door to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Seven, seventy-eighty-two Harbor Court. And I I just wanted, first of all, thank you all for your time. I know this is a a long night for you all. But for Jason to have to take this on as a single president and it and it's going to affect at a minimum six people, but it's going to impact the city as well because this is, this is, you know, stormwater drains that that run to the lake. And now it's it's basically stopped. And depending on how this is managed, we could end up, you know, with a terrible problem. And I just don't think that this is one residence issue, I think this is a city, city issue. And, you know, we're asking, he's asking for you all to look at this, consider this. And and I know that there's some people that have already looked into this matter to a certain extent, but I'm not sure that all the variables have been considered. You know, there there are, this is going to impact residents tremendously depending on what action Jason takes. And this is not something that we should be fighting over, it's just something we should be solving. There are, there are options and there is the ability to partner, but it shouldn't be one man's responsibility. So I just think that's important to say.
Thank you.
Whatever decision he makes, if it is his responsibility, is going to potentially negatively impact hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of, you know, I have a pool next door. If if he, if that drain has stopped and it's not allowed to continue to flow, I'm going to have significant issues. My neighbor on the other side of me is basically going to have a pond in his yard. And he's, you know, so anyway, that's that's, I just don't think that one man should have to take this on and and shoulder that burden. The 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 water is a city issue. I mean, it's it's coming off of the city streets, it's coming off everywhere. And it's, if if you look at how the terrain is, maybe maybe the city didn't know that the developer put that in, but the city knows now. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody who's followed us on on council knows that this stormwater is a kind of a constant issue. We just went through it a couple of months ago, being rainwater is a common enemy of everybody, depending on whether whether you're upstream or downstream, and we've continually looking at that, so we will continue to look at it. Next is Kim, thirty-ten Point Clear Drive. Come on up, Kim. Ken? Ken?
Kim.
Kim, okay, I'm sorry.
Might as well put a name avoiding him too.
What's your last name?
Gustan Hoven.
Okay, well, Kim's easier.
Maybe that's why they did it. Mine is the stormwater issue separate from theirs. And and when I first moved in, you know, I I joked with Chad once. It's like, yeah, you know, they were talking about putting this one culvert in and I was like, yeah, maybe it'll wash it out and I'll I'll have lakefront property, you know, jokingly. And, you know, recently he joked with me again, you know, you're never going to have it because we've got this other part culvert that's at the end of this creek that would keep it from ever happening. But my other neighbor to my right had paid to have the lake dredged, and I don't blame them. You know, they wanted to be able to get their boat access. Originally, it used to be a greenway and land there, a long time ago. Well, it got dug out many, many years ago and well, it got started filling back in. So the guy, my neighbor, Bill, had to dredge, he put the dirt up on his upper lot, which is, you know, his property to do. And, but now he's upset because the amount of water that comes from the the storm drainage, they they did put a culvert in the tight end Point Clear Drive. And it was a big one, I think you can walk in, it's so big. And to a couple of people's lots. And it got closer to the lake. And I think they put a new culvert in from Kalua, which comes down that way. Well, it became a pressure washer is what it did. Instead of it being slowed down and flowing, you know, like it naturally does, which was bad for the other people too. So it did, now it's good for them. It started carving away my land like unbelievable rate. I'm like, oh, I see, it's a pressure washer, it's just like slicing through it. So I put some rubber ties and then I now find out, well, you're not supposed to block the flow of of things. I'm like, why, it wasn't like this before. In fact, my other neighbor on the other side of me had a hole that was only a foot and a half wide in either direction and only about maybe a foot deep. And the water would collect there after a rain, it didn't run off. And she complained to Chad, I think, once about mosquitoes maybe harvesting there. Well, now that hole is from here to there, huge, you know? And, you know, like I said, I did do things to block it from washing my land away. I tried to do what I could. My other neighbor that's putting in the dredging and got it done, he wants riffraff put in. If you were to think of it, we both have lots that end at the same, very same, his is lakefront. consider they, we both have greenway in a way. His is lakefront, mine's creek front. Well, he wants to put the riffraff in, and there's a sewer pipe there that's black and about, hey, big round, it's visible. For me to step over it, I have to like hop over it.
Kim, that time was your three minutes.
Oh, I didn't know.
But I think we get, we get the idea.
I just don't want the riffraff.
Did you send me a picture of your hole about two years ago?
No.
Email, that wasn't you? Okay.
But it's, if he puts the riffraff in, it's gonna flood my property is what's gonna happen.
Okay.
It's too strong.
Send me an email on that.
Or talk to Chad or someone.
Okay.
Can I ask Kim a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Sir, sir.
Kim.
What is your address?
I got it, thirty-ten Point Clear.
Three zero one zero and three zero one one.
Is your wife gonna speak next?
My mom?
Your wife?
That's my mom.
Oh, your mom, I'm sorry. Kim, okay. Joyce, does she wanna say something?
I didn't realize I was going to have to speak.
Oh, you don't have to.
But I just wanted to.
You have to do it from the microphone.
Responsible for naming him K-I-M.
Okay.
I was thinking Roger Kipson's Kim.
You did a good job either way. Are there any more public comments? Okay, we'll call public comments closed. Next, we'll go to special presentation, the Land and Boat Parade Awards. Do you want me to do it from up there? Sure. This is the fun part. I hope everybody enjoyed the Fourth of July. It was fabulous, like it is every year. Anybody who goes on vacation during the Fourth of July, I wonder where, where are they going that's better than what we do? It's fantastic. So we had the boat parade, the land parade, well, we do the float parade, and we did a golf cart prize this year. So let's go, any meeny miny moe. Let's go with the golf cart award first. Does everybody know they already got these awards or is this gonna be a announcement? Okay, Brad O'Connor, are you here? Come on up, Brad. You had the best golf cart. And I bet, did you have anything to do with it? Say yes. If you remember, if you were here, Brad had the golf cart that looks like a pontoon boat. It was really fantastic, really good job. So on behalf of the city TK, congratulations. Please come back next year and do it again and win it again. How about that? And what's your name?
Nora.
Thank you very much. Okay, best float. And the winner is, I think I already know, was it croquet? The Croquet Club won the best float, Terry. This isn't close to anyone, right?
No, it's three out of the last four years we've taken first place.
Three out of four, okay, well, congratulations. Hope you come back next year with a bigger and better float.
I'd just like to recognize George Fiegel for designing the float for us and helping us build it.
Thank you, George. And the boat parade. It's always fun on the Fourth of July to get from one place to another because you wanna make sure you see everything, so to get from the land parade, I have to go home and take a shower because I'm soaking wet, and I get over there real fast to watch the boat parade, and I love all of it. And we used to come to your house and watch it, and then we followed them kinda around the peninsula all the way over to Windjammer. But this year, I didn't get a chance to do it at your house because I wasn't as swift as I used to be. So this year's boat parade grand prize winner is Clint Parker. Two for two. And what was the name of your boat? You had a, was it, you had a, was it theme?
I don't remember.
American what? American Legion?
American Legends.
Legend. Legend, okay, well, congratulations. Hope you get it again next year. Turn this off. Leave it on, am I doing more stuff? That's the fun part about doing these council meetings. Item number four is the approval of minutes. Council, you've had a chance to read the minutes. Is there any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing none, the minutes stand as published. Item number five, the committee appointments for planning commission is first. Do we have a winner?
Let's start with stormwater.
Let's start with stormwater because we have a tie.
We have four positions, two applicants, both of them are in, so provided council approves, David Good and William Armstrong to be added to the stormwater committee.
So both people who were going out for it, both won. How about that? Imagine how that works.
So far, so good. So if we could get a motion on that.
Okay, planning commission.
Can you go ahead and do?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stormwater.
I'd like to make a motion to install people as planned. Who are they? Say again their names.
David Good and Will Armstrong.
To install David Good and Will Armstrong into the stormwater position.
Second.
I have a second from Heather. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there. I didn't know we had to do that, I thought when they were just elected, they were elected.
Yeah, you killed it, though.
I killed it, boy.
You're on planning commission. You have a tie between Daniel Dunn and Rod Thompson. So if council could vote on, you have one position open, if y'all could scratch down on a sheet of paper, pass this way, between Dan Dunn and Rod Thompson. Just vote for one, please. We can get that squared away.
Fold it and send it. While the judges tabulate the winnings, it's three votes, come on. Rod Thompson. Rod Thompson is the new member of the planning commission.
Motion in a second on that, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to install Rod Thompson as our new member of the planning commission. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Now we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to new business, item six. Notes here. Okay, this is the impact fee. The impact fee, as adopted, oh, before I start, I just wanna say I got a text a few minutes ago, the Fort Mill School District passed six to one, so the school district did, is going to get a impact fee of eighteen thousand dollars per house from now on. That should have quite an impact on our schools here pretty soon. Okay, the Development Impact Fee Act, as adopted under the state code, allows joint, allows local jurisdictions to charge for new growth for the proportionate share of facilities and capacity that is attributed to the growth. City council has authorized the necessary study that has generated a report that provides that calculations of the fees to be charged to be offset a portion of needed capital improvement items that are allowed for under the state code. The required public hearing will be held on August sixth, twenty eighteen, and notice of that hearing was provided on July first, twenty eighteen, in the Herald. And we have any comments? No comments on our proposed fee. Do I have any public comments? Anybody in the audience wanna make any comments about the proposed?
Do you wanna get a motion in a second before you do that?
Either way.
Okay.
No comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the introduction of first reading of an ordinance providing for the adoption of development impact fees providing for the administration and enforcement thereof and other matters related to thereof. Do I get a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ryan Richard. Now, do we have any other comments? No comments? Please vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five to nothing unanimous. First reading is over. Item six B. This is the introduction, first reading for an ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of documents relating to issuing installment purchase revenue bonds not to exceed four million in order to build a police station and make other necessary improvements on the property. Sir, it's your floor.
Thank you. So my name is Tyler Trout, I'm the financial advisor to the city, not your bond lawyer. You're approving legal documents tonight, so I'm gonna give you a high level overview of what you're looking at. There are four different documents in front of you. You've got an ordinance, which is gonna authorize your moving forward and entering into a number of different agreements. Those agreements include a base lease agreement, they include a facilities purchase and occupancy agreement, and then you also have the approval of an indenture. Again, this is a financing structure that's typically used by municipalities in South Carolina to finance assets such as a police station. The corporation will be formed, it will construct the actual police station, you will enter into a base lease where you will lease the property, which you, the city currently own, to the corporation. The corporation will borrow funds to construct it, and then over fifteen years, you will purchase back a portion of the asset from the corporation at the end of the time you own it. It is a commonly used structure, we do it quite often with other municipalities, as I've stated, and is the right way to move forward. So what you're giving tonight is first reading for all of those documents, none of them are final, you're not bound at this point in time, that will occur at second reading of the ordinance and all these documents. So I'll pause there, it's a really high level overview of what you're looking at. I know there's a lot of information in front of you. Any questions from the group?
Any questions from council? Boy, it's very clear today.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do, I do wanna point out, just so everybody is aware, the bid, the RFP for the, for the actual bonds have been pushed out earlier this week, or, excuse me, late last week, Tyler, is that correct?
That's right, we've got seven days until financing proposals are due back to us. At that time, we will take all of those, we will summarize them and make a decision that's in the best needs of the city.
And that will, at that point, we'll be able to fill in the blanks that you've seen in the, in the ordinance and the documents going into second read, which is scheduled for August twentieth.
So at the second reading, we will have an actual figure? Are we still gonna do up to four million?
Well, the, the, not to exceed four million is to allow for the contingency in it. So you've got a construction, an FF and E cost of approximately three point eight million, and then you've got another two hundred thousand dollars in there in contingency cost. Our expectation is to come in at the three point eight, three point eight or less, but that's why we're using that not to exceed four million dollars, as we have done in the past with, with other projects like this. We feel pretty comfortable on the, on the three point eight number, but until we actually start pushing dirt, even given the number of soil samples we've done, you just don't know what's below ground from a rock standpoint until you get to pushing dirt. From the FF and E standpoint, we feel very comfortable with. From the actual building itself, construction numbers, we feel very good with.
Mayor, just to clarify, so in the, in the event that we don't need to use the contingency, do we still take that debt out, or is it just, we don't, we only take the three point eight, so we're not paying interest on that?
We will take it, but then will we use those, those leftover proceeds to go back towards debt payment?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's an automatic thing?
Yep, so you can use any excess funds that you borrow to make your near term payments.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Thanks for clarifying.
Nope, no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, entertain a motion.
Mayor and members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to issuing installment purchase revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed four million dollars in order to build a police station and make other necessary improvements to the property.
I have a motion from Alicia Dash, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard. Are there any questions before we proceed to vote? Are there any questions from the public? Anybody have a question about our four, up to four million dollar bond that you are about to be obligated to pay? All these smiles just happened. With no questions, call for a vote. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Five to nothing unanimous. First reading. Six B. All right, this is the intergovernmental agreement between York County and Tika Kay regarding the collection of developmental impact fees for the Fort Mill School District. York County just passed their final reading of an amendment to their code of ordinance to increase the Fort Mill School District development impact fee from twenty-five hundred dollars a home to approximately eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars per home. York County collects these fees and remits them to the school district. This intergovernmental agency agreement is necessary to ensure that the city of Tika does not issue any residential permanent buildings until the builder shows proof of payment to York County. The town of Fort Mill will be adopting the same kind of agreement. Is that clear to everybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Heather, you want this one?
Go for it, because I can't.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between York County and Tika Kay regarding the collection of developmental impact fees for the Fort Mill School District. York County just passed their final reading of an amendment to their code of ordinance to increase the Fort Mill School District development impact fee from twenty-five hundred dollars a home to approximately eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars per home. York County collects these fees and remits them to the school district. This intergovernmental agency agreement is necessary to ensure that the city of Tika does not issue any residential permanent buildings until the builder shows proof of payment to York County. The town of Fort Mill will be adopting the same kind of agreement.
Is that clear to everybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Heather, you want this one?
Go for it, because I can't.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between York County and Tika Kay regarding the collection of development impact fees for the Fort Mill School District and for said agreement to become effective, effective upon fully executed by both parties, which shall not occur until such time as York County passes the third and final read of the county's amendment to their development impact fee ordinance.
Which they just did. I have a motion from Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Heather Overman. Are there any questions? Are you last again? Any questions from the audience before we vote? All right, council, all in favor of this action, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five to nothing again. When will we, motion passes. Item six D. This is amendment to city manager's employment agreement. Charlie Fundenberg became the city manager in February twenty thirteen, the city manager for every, for every city, works at the pleasure of the council and under the terms of his contract. Charlie's initial contract was amended in August of twenty fourteen to extend the agreement to October first, twenty nineteen. This amendment extends that agreement to twenty, to October first, twenty twenty-four. And I'll just say that since I've been here, Charlie's done an exceptional and phenomenal job. He's better every expectations that I've had. If I ask him to do something, he does it and even comes back with, with even better ideas than I have sometimes. I know that's hard to believe. But his initial contract guaranteed, when he first took the job, he had to move from Rock Hill, was it? He had to move to Tika Kay, so he have a five year agreement so that after a couple of months, we just don't get tired of him and send him off, so he's got some stability so he can move here and buy a house and get his family started and situated. So Charlie seems to be happy here. He gets to live and work in the greatest city in the, in the city, in the, in South Carolina. He's got the safest city, the best schools, great quality of life here, competitive compensation. I was reading a thing today about how much football coaches make, and they said how football coaches make more than the governor of South Carolina. Well, I can tell you, Charlie makes more than the governor of South Carolina. So he's a happy camper. You know, when we treat our people well, they stay, they stay and they do good jobs for us. And I'll predict right now that I'll be long gone, but Charlie will be here as long as he wants to be here, and I think someday in thirty years from now, thirty-five years from now, that they will name the Tika Kay Municipal Building after him. They'll call it the, they'll call it the Charlie Fundenberg Municipal Building. So he can be here as long as he wants. But having said that, I don't see a need for a contract. That's just my personal opinion. If he's happy here, he can stay. If he's unhappy here, he can leave whenever he wants to. Charlie would be the only person here that has a contract. And besides just the contract, I have a personal issue with having a contract for six or seven years, out to twenty twenty, what is it, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five? I mean, at minimum, I mean, at maximum, I think a contract should not exceed the city council that, that insinuate, that starts it. So I'm not putting a contract on the next city council to go for. So that's my opinion. I'm not an emperor, I'm just the mayor. If it gets voted a different way, I'm happy with it, but I'm just saying, that's my only personal opinion. He could stay as long as he wants, and I think he will stay as long as he wants, because there's no place better than here. But that's much my opinion, so I hope he stays, contract or none, but I'm open for other comments. Hearing none? All right, open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
I have a motion from Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alicia Dash. Are there any other comments from either the council or the public? Does the public wanna make? So I hope he stays, contract or none, but I'm open for other comments. Hearing none? All right. Open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
I have a motion from Ryan Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alicia Dash. Are there any other comments from either the council or the public? Does the public want to make any comments before we vote? Hearing none? All in favor of this contract, signify by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
And if no, me. That's four to one. It passes. Congratulations, Charlie. You're going to be here for a long time, which I think you were going to be anyway. Item 6E. 6E is the street acceptance for Stonecrest Connector Road, which is Delaney Drive in Cameron Creek. The street presented has been inspected by the city's operations and utility staff as well as a city's engineer. The Development Services Department has verified that the street has reached the prerequisite percentage of build-out as required by city code. The street has been constructed to meet city street standard and has been found to be acceptable by the city staff and the city engineers. And Delaney, remind me again, is the one across from...
Behind Wellmore.
Correct. Okay, got that one. Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Nobody wants to do the street motion, huh?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to accept a portion of Delaney Drive, known as the Stonecrest Connector Road in Cameron Creek, as presented into the city's street inventory contingent upon the city manager, receiving all necessary documents, including but not limited to deed and warranties from MI Homes in a form acceptable to the city.
I have a motion from Gus Machinas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Heather Overman. Are there any comments from the council? How about the city? You guys want to get involved with the street? No. All right. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Five to nothing unanimous.
Good job, Gus. Nobody thought you could read that gun.
All right. We've done this in the past. 6F is a consideration of memorandum of agreement with the Department of Juvenile Justice for detention of juveniles. Fortunately, we don't have to do this too often. This memorandum of agreement of understanding is executed annually between the Department of Juvenile Justices and all jurisdictions. Should the Tika K Police Department have to place a juvenile offender in custody with DJJ, Department of Justice?
Juvenile Justice.
Department of Juvenile Justice. This MOU provides that they will accept the offender into their custody and that the city will pay them $50 per 24-hour period, per detainee, for that service. As I said again, fortunately, we don't have to use this too often, but we have to make this agreement annually. It has to be renewed annually. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Juvenile Justice for the detention of juveniles.
I have a motion from Ryan Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alicia Dash. Any comments from either the public or city council? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? 6G. Oh, this is the pickleball. All in favor, say aye? Say aye? Okay. Well, last month, Terry Hunt came and spoke to us about the croquet club, and I think a couple of months before that, who was, who came? Trish and Tim came and asked us about pickleball. We've had tennis people here. And, you know, we can solve all these problems if we just had a million dollars or 1.2 million. So we can't do all of them. So we have to kind of think about what we're going to do first and when we can do it. We have a very nice croquet court. We have tennis courts. I wouldn't say that are great, but we don't have any pickleball courts. And some people say, sure you do. I played on pickleball courts the other day. And you really don't. You have lines on a tennis court. Your net is too high. The lines are confusing to me. You know, and I've only been out there one time, so I don't get it myself. But we can't do all three of it one time unless somebody can write me a check for 1.2 million dollars. And since we don't... And we'll name the courts after you, I promise. But we just don't have it. You know, we run a very tight ship around here. We've got, you know, we've got growth. We have to do infrastructure. We've got parks we have to do. We have to maintenance. So the reason somebody might say, well, why are you doing pickleball this time and not something else? Because we don't have pickleball. We have croquet, so the croquet people can get along a little while longer. We're going to try to work on the croquet very soon. I want another croquet court. I really do. And tennis, I got to get the pickleball people off the tennis court before I can do anything with tennis. So pickleball is the logical step. So I wanted here to the council to discuss in front of everybody in public so we can come to some kind of resolution to this. So we got to have all of them, but we can't do them all at one time. So I think we just kind of figured between us, and maybe somebody wasn't a part of that conversation, that pickleball made the most sense. So we'd like to build some pickleball courts, if you guys don't mind. No, I think it's okay. This side of the room is not very active in it, but... Oh, we got two thumbs down over here. They must be croquet people.
A senior facility.
A senior facility. Okay. Well, you bring that to us, and we'll see if we can figure that out. So we have a couple of options we get. We can, well, we suffer bored. We are also talking about bocce. Bocce court. We can convert two of the lower courts into pickleball. That takes away from tennis, so the tennis people won't be very pleased. We can build two new standalone courts, which would be eight courts, I guess, two tennis courts. Then the size of that, when you turn them sideways, you guys know better than me, I'm not telling you anything, becomes pickleball courts. Or we can just kick this down the road and decide to solve it at a later date. So I'm going to make the motion to direct the staff to find a standalone location for the courts and bring back a proposal to the council at the next meeting. And that is our motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Are there any comments anybody in the audience would like to make? Tim's going to come up here and talk to us. Terry's want to talk to us, too? This is Tim reading 7... No, 7100. Do you live on Anchorage Lane? You're the loud guy next to me.
That's Jim.
That's Jim. Well, that's true, too. Wow. This is almost like the impact fee.
I thought we were getting honorary pickleball gear. I didn't know this was going to be a folder, but...
So you're going to read all 79 pages?
So Timothy, reading 7100, Anchorage Lane. Make this quick here. I was originally going to present just a couple of pages here, but I wanted to include the survey that we did earlier in the year. And this is something that you might have already received. In fact, you did, but admittedly, it was not a very good format. So we tried to clean it up a little bit. And I just want to point out a couple of things before we get into the other things. The first section on there is the overall results. The survey had 232 respondents back in February. The first section is the overall respondents to those. The second section is broken down just into the Tika K residents in there. So that's what the difference is between those two sections. The third section is the comments that were received just from the Tika K residents in the survey. The very first page is just some highlights of those. What I really want to point out there is the last section, though, which is the respondents from the non-Tika K residents. And the reason why I wanted to put this in there and include it is, as you guys are very much aware, earlier this week, last week, actually, in the Herald, there was an article about the rebranding of Tika K and what the effort is and what they want to do. And the emphasis there is focusing a little bit on sports facilities, but also how do we bring people into the community? All right? And as you see, as you read through the comments in that last section, that the pickleball courts are going to draw in a lot of people. All right? A lot. There's opportunities for tournaments, okay? That's going to bring people in. And there's opportunity just for the recreational side. All right? It's going to happen. There's really no other way about it. All right? It's the fastest-growing sport in America right now. All right? It's in demand. It's very easy to play. All ages can play it. It's just a universal game for everybody. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that one little section. Now, what I really want to show you is the first three pages that are in that folder there, and that is the proposals that we've talked about in the last couple of meetings. This was originally just as a proposal for using the lower courts. So that first page there is the full court layout of what can be done. Nine full courts can be laid out there with walkways, benches, seating in between all those courts. That's if we had all the whole lower section of the courts. The second page is the, if we had just half of the courts. So it's 120 by 100, which we could get six courts in there comfortably. All right? You can do eight, but you start to cram them in there. All right? Six would be more comfortable on that.
Are you happy with six?
I'd be happy with 12, but...
Since you were asking.
All right. The third page there just talks about the costs that are going to be involved with it here. So if you look at how that breaks down, and this is just based on a half a court, half of the lower courts size there. So if we just repainted that, all right, the painting cost for repainting would be about $3,400. All right? New posts and nets for six courts would be $1,800 for the posts and $750 for the nets. And then the fencing to separate the courts would be $1,500. So you're talking just for changing from pickleball over to tennis on half the courts, you're talking $7,500.
And then where would the tennis people go?
They go to the other two courts over there. They still have their courts. We've got our courts.
Do you have one of these? Did you? Okay. Do you have one for Charlie?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I just want to bring up one point. Charlie, you'll have to help me here. The last I heard, Game On is planning on building tennis courts, I think 11? I mean, six indoor, five outdoor. Anyway, they're going to build 11 tennis courts, new tennis courts. And how many pickleball courts are they going to build?
I think it was eight the last time I talked to them.
Eight pickleball courts instead of the four or five they're asking for. When do they project to have these athletic facilities finished, Charlie?
Probably within the next three to five years. Just estimate.
So in the next three to five years, the city will be competing with Game On for pickleball and tennis, I think.
Thank you.
And they're not going to build a croquet court.
Thank you. And we might not either. Any other comments?
Yeah, go ahead. From here?
Ready?
Yep.
So I would like to propose a subsequent motion.
Well, let's finish this one first. We got one on the table right now, so we have to resolve this one. So if this one fails, then you can come up with yours.
So we vote first before the...
Well, we have, otherwise, we have two motions on the table. You only have...
Okay. Yeah.
You want to comment, or you want to vote, and then we'll comment? Go ahead.
Okay. So I had the opportunity to go out and play pickleball alongside a mayor here a couple of weeks ago, and I had a great time. Thank you so much for being so kind to... My husband and I, we had a great time. It's a great sport. Really enjoyed playing it, and I love seeing numbers such as like $7,500 to do some investment to, you know, help extend or diversify our portfolio of recreational facilities in our community. I love the fact that we have so many people here tonight. This is probably the most people we've had in a really long time, so it's great to have you here, especially on such a big night. So thank you guys for coming. Another thing I really liked about pickleball and talking to folks was just the sense of community that it created and how folks were just open and willing to teach each other how to play and support one another, and that was really important to me. And so I found a lot of value in what you guys do and what you bring to our community. I think that's special, and it helps fit in with that, making our city more of a community and that bringing that small-town feel here. So when I saw this on the agenda, I felt a little bit conflicted because I love, I love what you guys do. I love the sport. It's fun to play. It's great that you guys have this, bring this unique environment to our city. At the same time, I feel conflicted because I think it's premature to make a decision on next year's budget before we've taken the time to evaluate what all of the needs are within the city. So basically, by approving this, by saying, yes, we're going to do this, it's a done deal, we're moving forward. We haven't even decided to fund, or how we're going to fund staff salaries for next year. We don't know what all of the needs are within the community. There's a lot of capital investment needs that we have, and it's not saying that I don't think that pickleball is important or that it might not even fall in that priority list to fund. It's just I think it's premature to make the decision before we've had the time to have our budget discussions, before we've received our recommendation for the city manager. And so therefore, I'm in favor of waiting and having that strategic conversation, getting a bigger picture in terms of what are all the needs that the city has and how are we going to prioritize them to make sure that we're making the best decisions with all of the information in front of us. So I share that. I thank you guys for coming out, but I wanted to let you know that.
Are there any other comments? I just want to state that we are a recreational community, and this is part of a recreation that we are missing out on. We have tennis, croquet, golf, you know, all other different kinds of sports, and we're just missing on pickleball. So that's why I think it's very important. But I also wanted to go ahead and present this in public now because Terry and Tim and everybody's always come and say, when are we going to get this? When are we going to get this? And I always want to always tell them, the mayor is not the emperor. I need three votes. So you're going to find out if we have three votes or not. And if we don't have three votes for this, we're not going to have three votes for Terry. We're not going to have three votes for tennis. So it takes three votes. I can't just say we will have pickleball. So I appreciate all you guys coming up to me at every opportunity you have and saying, when are we going to get this, this, and this? Today, you'll see why, okay? So with that, is there any other questions?
David, can I make a comment, please, Mr. Mayor? I mean, the motion is not to build it.
Right.
The motion is to...
Study it.
Study it, and let's look at it. I'm going to say, and I mentioned to you when you came up here earlier, you know, I admire your tenacity. I thought it was really cool riding through the parade, and all of a sudden, there's a pickleball paddle in my face. Don't forget us! Don't forget us! How the hell could we forget you? But no, I admire it, and I think it's worth looking at. We are the recreational community of Lake Wylie, and we don't have a place for you to play at this point. If it's possible, I'd like to see it happen. Alicia, I don't know if it's possible. We may not have the money in the budget, but let's see if we do.
Yeah, and I agree there.
Yeah, and I agree there, I agree with Alicia as well. We do need to be fiscally responsible as elected officials to help lead the city. But this motion, I believe, just gets us to the point when we are doing budgeting workshops, if it is something that fits. So, I don't think this is a step in either direction, but at least it gets the ball rolling to see, do we have the spot? How much will it cost? What will the impact be if we would decide to move forward, so?
So, just to reiterate, I'm sorry, it's the proposal that he's going to bring back, he's going to study it, and he's going to bring back to us, you know, where it's going to be, how much it's going to cost, and when we can do it. That's what we're doing. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to comment. I also want to see pickleball come here. I'm not opposed to pickleball, but to Alicia's point, we have the budget workshop on August 1st, and I'm a data girl and I'm a numbers girl, and I need to see it all laid out, I need to look at everything. And so, I like a $7,500 number a lot better than, you know, do we need to build new courts? You know, that's a huge difference. And so, I want to look at all of our options, and so, like I said, I'm not opposed to pickleball, but I don't know if I'm ready to make that motion tonight.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. All opposed? It's three to two, the motion passes. And again, this is just for a proposal, and it got three to two, okay? They were not even building it yet, this is just to find out how much it costs. There's people who don't even want to know how much it costs. So, okay, anyway, let's move on. Item number seven, city manager's report. Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, briefly tonight. Had an excellent Fourth of July celebration. Special thank you to our staff, Joey Blutham for planning the events, Lacey Armstrong, who's here behind me tonight, for assisting with the event coordination and publicity, our Public Works for making the city look beautiful and working during the event, and our public safety from law enforcement and fire for keeping us safe throughout the entire day at all the events. I thought it was a fantastic Fourth of July, and I really appreciate staff's efforts on that end as well as our volunteers. Reminder to council, we do have a budget workshop scheduled for Wednesday, August 1st, right here in the council chambers. I've got that scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM. Budget packets should be sent out to you either the, probably around the Thursday or Friday before the workshop. We also have the special council meeting on Monday, August 6th, with planning commission to conduct the final, or conduct the public hearing and the second and final read on the development impact fees. And that meeting start, that special meeting starts at 6:30. So, 6 o'clock on the workshop and 6:30 on the public hearing. July 18th through the 21st, Katie and I, along with several members of council, will be at the municipal association meeting. In the following week, I will actually be out of the office on vacation, but I will be reachable via email or cellphone if you do need me throughout that time. Department heads have been working on strategies and ideas from the goals set at the strategic planning workshop held in June. I'm working on scheduling a retreat with them to finalize things, hopefully in late August, early September, so then we can circle back around with council this coming fall in a workshop-style setting to discuss and get feedback from you. No action required by council at this time, just wanted to make you aware, we are working diligently through that process. Haven't forgot about it. And last thing I have, and good, he is still here. Last but certainly not least, I want to brag just a quick minute on a member of our extended TIAK family. Chief Parker's daughter, Ally Parker, graduated just a couple of weeks ago from the FBI National Youth Leadership Program in Quantico, Virginia. She graduated on June 29th. There were only 60 participants from around the world that were invited to attend in this. We're super proud of Ally for this amazing accomplishment. And if you've ever met her, she is a lot like her dad, so no surprise that she did so well. So, congratulations to her for that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to item number eight, council comments. We always start with the handsome Ryan Richard.
I don't have anything.
Alicia?
Well, I can make up for that. So, a couple of things, I want to thank everyone for an amazing Fourth of July. The city did a great job putting on events. It was a long day, but it was a fun day. The fireworks were amazing, as always, thank you so much. Thanks to all the volunteers, it takes a lot of work and effort, not just from staff, but we have people volunteering their time to make sure that things go smoothly as well. And to all of those who participated in the event. So, thank you for being in the parade, the boat parade, going to Windjammer, all the things that happened throughout the day. It really makes it cool and special and fun when there's a lot of people there, and it's a good vibe. And also, I wanted to thank the Lions Club for throwing an awesome fish fry and the mayor for a great speech on the state of the city. So, thank you, guys, and I think that's posted online as well, isn't it? Okay, maybe not. The speech, okay, maybe not. But you can always come next year and hear him again, if you're interested. The other thing I want to do, I want to mention is this week, the Municipal Association of South Carolina is hosting their summer conference. And so, I look forward to attending that this week with some of my fellow council members. Looking forward to learning a lot of good stuff about local government management and how we can best serve you as our residents. Tonight was a big night, two big votes, maybe, maybe four big votes happened. Thank you so much for coming out. I do want to thank specifically Trish for inviting myself and my family to come play pickleball. I really did enjoy it, I think it's fun. I hope that I can learn how to be a better player someday, maybe on our own courts, if that works out. And lastly, but not least, happy shopping day, today's Amazon Prime Day. If you can, get online and buy some good stuff, just a reminder.
I don't even know what that is.
It's amazing.
Oh, I've heard about that. It's the shopping thing I don't do very well.
Lots happening, but thank you so much, thank you guys for coming and staying the whole time.
Thanks, Alicia. Gus Machinas?
Well, I just spent my 21st Independence Day, Fourth of July in TIAK, but my first one as a council person, and it was always a lot of fun, but it was a new perspective doing it as a council member. But thanks to everybody who made that happen. It took a lot of work, but especially all the city workers who had to work on what the rest of us consider to be a holiday. Congratulations to the three new people on committees tonight. And congratulations to the pickleballers to get a motion passed. And just wanted everybody to notice, we don't always all agree with each other.
That's right.
And that's what democracy is all about.
That's right. Thanks, Gus. Mayor Pro Tem?
All right, yeah, I just wanted to echo everything that everybody else said. The Fourth of July was a really long day. We are now in the market for a golf cart because we just, yeah, we have to have one now, apparently. I'm excited that the Fort Mill School impact fee passed tonight, that's a big, big win. I went to the last meeting, but obviously, I couldn't be there tonight, so I'm excited that it passed. And then I'm going to say a really controversial word, coyotes. We did begin trapping this morning off of Lookout Point, or Lookout Park, rather, and because we've had some incidents up there, and so, I just want to put it out there. Obviously, I know that this is not an end-all be-all. It's sort of a Band-Aid approach because of how the coyotes repopulate, we're all aware of that. But because it's become a public safety concern, I personally, and I'm not speaking for anybody else on council, but I personally want to make sure that we're keeping our residents as safe as possible, knowing that, I understand that, yes, we have to get rid of some coyotes, and that's not the ideal situation.
I saw on Facebook, they only attacked a little bit.
Just a little bit, I saw that too, yeah, actually, yeah. Just a little bite, little bite. And that's all I have, thank you.
Yep, well, we're going to nip it in the bud, as they say on Andy Griffith's show. Also, everybody, my favorite staycation of the year is the Fourth of July. It's my 18th, it's something I look forward to every year. We usually get a house full of people that come, and it's just too hard to carry them all around now, so they bring in their own golf carts and everything else. But what a wonderful day, I appreciate all the city employees who gave up their Fourth of July to make sure that we had a great and safe Fourth of July, especially the police and the city staff that just knocked it out of the park like they do every year. So, Charlie, make sure they know that we appreciate them immensely. This is the best event in this whole area. I think I've heard somebody else say they've got the biggest parade or the biggest event. That's not true, I think it's us. And next year, I think we ought to get somebody that just sits in a golf cart and drives down and counts everybody on both sides, so we can say that we had 3,000 people there or something. So, when they say they had however many people, we can say, no, ours was bigger. The impact fees, I'm not going to make a comment on it tonight because I don't want to jinx it, but August 6th, you'll probably hear me yipping and screaming and hollering, just like the people probably did at the county when they passed the $18,000 impact fee. Next year, I want to make a note just for the council here. In January of 2018, I'm actually going to take a vacation. That just so happens to be when we have our January city council meeting. We always push it off to the Tuesday because it's Martin Luther King. I'm actually leaving on vacation for Martin Luther King's birthday. So, I'd ask, we don't have to decide now, but if we can just move our council meeting the week prior. And I know that's going to affect the planning commission, everything else. And if it doesn't work, then we can do it without me, but I just want to let you know, I've never missed a council meeting, a regular council meeting. I don't want to start now as the mayor, if it's okay with you guys, you know, but if it's not, then we can work it out. And that's all I have, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments, anybody against it? Never is. By voice, boy, I hear, all in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, no? We're adjourned.